Okay, our meeting tonight will be in a couple of different phases. This first part of our meeting is an actual public hearing. We have four items on our agenda tonight for public hearings. And so the first two items, ordinance number 01-19 and 02-19 are both the second reading of these ordinances. Three and four, these are the first reading of these ordinances and so there will be a, or as I say, reading, a hearing. There will be another hearing on these on the 28th. So there will not be any action on those that are listed there as new business, 03 and 04. This is the first of two public hearings. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna take these in order. Anyone that would like to speak on these ordinances, we're gonna ask you to come up to the podium so you can be recognized and have the floor and also so it can be picked up on the camera. We need you to state your name for the record and then you'll have five minutes to deliver your comments about that one ordinance. So you may want to speak about all of these ordinances or maybe more than one of these ordinances tonight, but we're only gonna take them one at a time. So we've got a good turnout here tonight. I'm sure many of you are gonna wanna speak, so we're gonna need everyone to help us keep the flow and keep things moving for everybody staying on point for that ordinance and limiting your comments to five minutes or less. And so Robert's gonna be our time keeper tonight and will give you a one-minute warning. When you get to four minutes, he'll hold up one finger to let you know that you've got one minute to wrap it up. And at five minutes, he's gonna ask you to stop so we can recognize the next person. So ordinance 0-0119, amends language in chapter 34 regarding land development to include and adjust the public nuisance ordinance of 2004. It would also add chapter 12 in the county ordinance, or code of ordinances regulating buildings and building construction, second reading. So who would like to be first? Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium.
I spoke briefly at the last meeting and there's a correction to the minutes, but I guess when we get to that, I'll bring it up after. Mr. Whitfield, the taxpaying citizens of Walker County, I'd like to ask you, Commissioner, to throw section 34 and section 13, what old high school teacher used to tell us, file 13 in the garbage. You talked about these before. You talked about them last night. All you basically said was blighted properties and you didn't show the real burned-out buildings last night, I don't know why, but you did pretty much week. Some of the worst-looking buildings, okay? That's really all I got at it that you said. It's really go into any detail what this document says. I'd like to read, 'cause I don't know if people have read this, and I'd like to make a comment on the whole document. You know, I mentioned last week or two weeks ago about the complaining realm. That's still in this document and I believe the county lawyer explained that last week and said that nobody's gonna understand unless they're a lawyer. So why would you wanna put a document out here that nobody can understand unless they're in the law school? Is what I'm asking the public, don't you? Sir? Blighted and dark means a construction as defined in this section, and this is section 12-52, page 8. Defined in this section as construction as defined in this section or property within a county which is constructed or maintained in violation of applicable codes, is unfit for human habitation or commercial, industry, or business use or occupancy due to inadequate provisions for ventilation, light, air, sanitation, or open spaces. Poses an imminent harm to life or other property due to fire, flood, hurricane, tornado, earthquake, storm, or other natural catastrophe. Well, that covers a lot of ground right there, I think. Is vacant and used in commission of drug crimes, is occupied and used repeatedly for commission of illegal activities, including facilitating organized crime or criminal enterprises after written notice to the owner of such activities conducted therein. Is abandoned, has graffiti or any exterior wall or facade visible from private or public property. Has wooden boards, plywood, other wood-based material, or any other non-transparent material covering any window or door. Has visible exterior deterioration included but not limited to, let me repeat that, but not limited to faded, chipped, or peeling paint, broken, loose, or missing siding material. Broken, cracked, or otherwise compromised doors, windows, or other openings. Otherwise constitutes an endangerment to the public health or safety as a result of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. Of course, that's one big sentence there with nine semicolons in it, which, that's awful big, one sentence, 'cause each semicolon is actually, you know, a sentence in itself, but it's all in one big sentence.
One minute.
Sure.
One minute.
Stop my time. Oh, I just got one minute? Wow.
We're four minutes in.
Wow. Let me just say that I hope you value your signature. Hope you have read and understood and know what this is gonna do to the citizens of this county. Firmly, I'm asking you, I'm asking you to not sign section 34 and 12, but the wrong way, start all over. If you're concerned mainly about those pieces of property and that's it, write up a different, write up a different ordinance just pertaining to that property. Please. In fact, how much more time do I got, 'cause I could go into a lot more. We got, let me just say something about instrument. In 34-65, it talks about an instrument being played. That, what if my granddaughter wants to go out and play her French horn if she played a French horn? If I had a granddaughter playing the French horn and wanted to go out on the back porch and wanted to go on the front porch and play her horn and somebody, I haven't got time to look it up, 'cause my time, but you know, anybody could nitpick this thing to death. I disagree with it and I hope you don't sign it. Hope you value your signature.
Thank you very much. Okay, who would like to speak next on this ordinance 01-19? Anyone else like to speak?
I'd like to say something, but I don't know if it pertains to me or not.
If it pertains to this ordinance or for...
Like you said, it takes a lot of your understanding stuff. I'm just a farmer. I mean, I graduated high school and I'm not real stupid, but they took stuff in here. I don't have a clue.
Anyone that could be recognized at the podium? Yes, sir.
My name is James Powell, with the Chippemaca Order. I live inside the city, but this has far-reaching effects. There's a group in Rossville, the Wilson Road neighborhood. My good friend David Roden is trying to convince the cities to allow the counties to take over, the county to take over enforcement of this ordinance within the cities and submit their authority to the county, which I totally do not agree with and I don't really think is constitutional, but I did want to speak to this ordinance. There's a lot of far-reaching things in this ordinance. People need to read it. People are uninformed. I try to make people there on Facebook. I put a word out there for people to read this thing. I'm hoping it would be standing room only tonight. And I hope people, I had people that didn't even know what a utility trailer was. And one guy asked me what a utility trailer was and I told him that's the thing you haul things on. If you got a utility trailer, you better get ready to build your building around it because you can't have it sitting in your yard. If you got a boat, you better get ready to build a building around it because you can't have it sitting in your yard according to this ordinance. This ordinance covers a multitude of different things from even from your dog. It says that five people complain about you, then that qualifies to file a complaint against you in magistrate court. Now, on the blighted buildings, I called the Georgia Department of Revenue today and talked to the Commissioner's office. And they were kind enough to send me what they think that our county attorney was trying to put in here. It is code 41-2-9, county and municipal ordinances relating to unfit buildings or structures. But this thing says it will be filed, that the complaint will be filed in magistrate court. This says it should be filed in superior court. Now, I believe this tops anything you put in here. If I remember correctly, state law tops your little local ordinances. So, another thing, it doesn't mention that this would be a tax. This thing says a special tax shall be created to recover cost for abatement of any property that the county needs to go in and correct. Well, this doesn't call it a tax. If it's a tax, then the voters in Walker County will need to vote on it. You can't sit up here and pencil in a special tax and call it a tax. Now, it does say here that it can be a lien be put against the property, but to call it a special tax and to try to run it through magistrate court, you're going against state law. I'll be happy to give you a copy of this, I got it. Also, another thing that bothers me is the fines, $500 to $1,000 per day. Folks on...
One minute, Mr. Powell.
February the 20th, well, actually, this was published on February 20th, but on Wednesday before that, the Supreme Court ruled about excessive fines. Someone who draws $600 a month social security and you have your code enforcement people go out because five of the neighbors complained, it don't even have to be five neighbors, five citizens. There are 68,000 people in this county and five of them are gonna complain and you're gonna send a code enforcement officer out to write them a complaint, to write a ticket on them and fine them $500 per day that they don't get it corrected? You might wanna read the Supreme Court ruling also. I know you went to law school. I didn't, but I've got sense enough to read and I know how this thing, this thing will come down to some kind of a court case and it will be in state or federal court. It won't be in the magistrate court of Walker County. So I encourage you not to do this. If you do, it will be remembered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Who would like to be next to be recognized and speak on ordinance number 01? On this first ordinance. Yes, come on up, please.
I'm not coming up to speak on this, but this...
This is the only thing that we're talking about this time?
Excuse me, this gentleman just wasn't clear on which ordinance. Can you just hear him out? Otherwise, he won't get heard if he doesn't know what ordinance.
Yes, he would be welcome. Sir, would you like to come up?
Might as well. I'd just like to know that Walker County...
Yeah, come up here so you can, then you get your name for the record.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I didn't really wanna bring attention myself, I just wanna listen. It'd take 20 minutes to say what I wanna say, but anyway.
Please state your name.
John Romans. I live in a cattle, at a little farm out there. I was there, been there 53 years and that's my whole life, cattle and hay is all I've wanted to do all my life. And I've got some old cars and tags, some of them's down and in the rough and I just wondered if some of that's gonna be, you know, coming down on me. I've heard something about issuing tags on all those things. I ain't got enough money to buy tags on all them all. I mean, you gotta have insurance on them to get a tag. So I don't know if that affects any of this on me, but I bought property that joins me that had old houses so I can put them in fence and let my cows run in there. I'm 73 years old and I'm still in pretty good health, but I've got four of them actually and they'll, nobody ever live in them again, but if I tore them down, it's gonna kill me. And I can order stack all that good lumber, so they're better off just standing there till maybe my son or grandson can use the materials and build their own house someday. But I just wondered if this affects me. See, I don't know if I have any say in this for the day.
Well, just to give everybody an update, we've had some good comments tonight and some other comments that have come in that has brought some attention that as far as junk vehicles in particular, or old vehicles, or tractors, or things, that we need to take a closer look at how this affects agriculture, which is what you're speaking of. And so our intentions tonight on this, chapter 34, that portion of this, we're going to table tonight as the Digintin continues to work on their recommendations for that and also for the legal counsel to consult with them. So the section 34, dealing with agriculture, is under review and so therefore, we're gonna table that portion of this in the next phase of our meeting.
Well, see, another thing is, I'm scared dead if I'm gonna drop dead and my wife's gonna have a nervous breakdown trying to get rid of all this stuff. And I've accumulated a lot of stuff over my life and I like old stuff. And when these cars, you can't take cars like I got to the scrapyard. It's over then, you'll never see them again, in the 30s and the 50s, see? I like looking at them. When I get tired of looking at one, I'll trade it for nothing and look at it for a while, you know? But I just, I've always had the fears, somebody's gonna come out there and give me 30 days getting rid of these cars and there ain't no way man can do it. You know, and that's my life. I love them. I was looking at them, playing with them when I got time, which ain't much, the foreign keeps me so busy. But, you know, I've always had that fear that somebody's gonna come up, but they hadn't and I'm thankful for that. But I've heard about this and there's no telling what's gonna happen now. I've heard you're a fiery man and usually you probably have to take each situation on its own merits.
That's right.
Instead of just a big browed brus, you know? But, you know, I could go on and on, but that's really the basis.
Yeah, we're still working on that part when it deals with agriculture.
Well, you know, I doubt my car would deal in with agriculture.
Are you zoned agriculture?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm speaking of, is you're zoned.
I started out at 28 and I bought everything I could that joined me all my life and I moved there when that road was chert. I hauled chert in and filled up potholes, hauled oil in and hauled the roads down. They put you in jail that now. The county used to do it.
Yeah, it used to do the work, that's right.
Yeah, that's right. But I just hope that, you know, there is some mercy when they come knocking on my door and, you know, but I am gonna get rid of this stuff. Actually, I really am. I've sold five cars in the last year, lost 400 to 500 on each one of them, but, you know, it's time for someone to go. When he does, when he do knock on my door, just please give me plenty of time to do something 'cause I'm working on it now.
Okay. Appreciate you coming, very much. Anyone else on ordinance number 0119 that'd like to speak before we move on to the next? Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name's Randall Pittman and I live up there in Rossville. My question here on this ordinance in the section 34 here, about abandoned vehicles. Down here on abandoned vehicles, it says, there has no tag displayed on the vehicle or the owner cannot provide to the county police officers proof and insurance. If you got a car broke down and you're trying to save your money to repair it, you know, you're not gonna insure it. You're gonna have your registration suspended so you're not paying them fees too. Why must you carry insurance on that car?
Well, my understanding is that it's part of the state law requirement in order to get a tag. In the state of Georgia, all vehicles that are tagged have to at least have liability insurance.
I understand that, but when you've had your registration suspended, you don't have insurance on it, why must you carry insurance on that car if it's sitting in your driveway or on your property?
Joe, got any additional? I don't, but just for your knowledge, Mr. Pittman, and for everybody, this section 34, this is not a new ordinance. This ordinance is already part of our county ordinance. So, I mean, it was enacted in 2004, long before any of us got here. The only things that are being affected by our action or inaction, depending on the way that we decide to do it, are those changes that you see marked through. So that particular provision, I know this is not an answer to your question, but I think it may provide you with a little bit of...
So state law tells me if I've got, if I'm a vehicle, I have to have it insured and tagged even though it's not operable?
In order to get a tag, you have to have it insured.
Yeah, I understand that. Right, that's all I've got.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Yeah, that's, I'm glad Matt brought that up. This, chapter 34 is not new. We were just looking to make some amendments to this. This has been on the books in the county since 2004, that whole chapter 34, and we've just, we're making some modifications and we've identified there's some additional modifications to be made as well. All right, anyone else on 0119? Okay, we're gonna, oh, yes.
My wife would like to give her time to me if that's possible.
Well, we're not gonna be able to do that, but if she would like to speak, she could.
Okay, let me know. I just want her, if she wanted to give her time to me.
You said on TV that you'd do that?
Well, after further consultation with our legal staff, we've made the determination we're not gonna be able to do that 'cause we knew we'd have a large crowd and to be able to give everyone fair time and to get to the other ordinances, but we're not taking any action on 34 tonight, so you can come back and speak at our next hearing.
But you are on 12.
Very likely, yes.
Well, I'm asking you not to.
Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinance number 0-219. I amend language in chapter 46 regarding construction of road and county maintenance to bring current standards in line with surrounding counties. This is the second reading. Anyone like to speak to ordinance number 0219? Okay, last call, anyone? Okay, we'll say there's no action on that one. What we're gonna do, this is probably gonna be a good stopping point for us because we've got some special guests that's planning to be here at 6:30 that we want to recognize on our proclamations tonight. So before we go into the new business, we're gonna take a recess and we're gonna start back at 6:30 so we can recognize those that are here for the proclamations. The proclamations for Down Syndrome Day in Walker County, proclamation for intellectual development disabilities, and also our proclamation for Social Work Month. So we're gonna cover those three and then we're gonna come back to our public hearing. But due to our friends and some of the time restrictions we've got, we wanna cover those three proclamations so they're not delayed in getting back home on time like they need to be. So we're gonna recess until 6:30. I get everyone's attention. With respect to your time, we wanna get started, so if we can get everyone's attention. Thank y'all for working with us here tonight. This is a lot on our agendas, but this is a real special occasion to recognize some very special people in our community and bring some awareness to some things. And so I wanna read this first proclamation and it says, "By the sole commissioner of Walker County, a proclamation Down Syndrome Day. Whereas March 21st has been selected to signify the uniqueness of the triplication of the 21st chromosome which results in individuals having Down Syndrome. And whereas each year, one in every 691 children are born with Down Syndrome in the United States, representing approximately 6,000 births nationwide and 90 to 100 births in Georgia. And whereas, while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the length and quality of life of those affected, more investigation is needed into this cause and treatment of Down Syndrome. And whereas people with Down Syndrome possess a wide range of abilities and are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles in our community. And whereas, on Down Syndrome Days, many groups and individuals will work to educate the public about Down Syndromes and to promote the potential and contribution of those with the condition. Therefore, I, Shannon Kate Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby designate March 21st, 2019, as Down Syndrome Day in Walker County. Residents are encouraged to wear bright-colored socks and share pictures of those socks on social media with a hashtag, #LotsOfSocks, joining a global effort to get the world talking about Down Syndrome. Signed and sealed the 14th day of March, 2019." It's with great honor that I sign this. And I think we've got some folks with us tonight that, we gotta attest that, that are here for this special day and so we want to take and get them to tell us their name and if they're still in school, where they go to school, or if they're homeschool or whatever case, and tell us what their goal is in life or what they wanna do when they grow up. So who wants to be first?
Me.
All right. So tell us your name.
I'm Mrs. Maggie. I work in the park side. I wash dishes, flip, stock, move, take our rocks out. I was talking to people, working in the park side. And I got family, there's mommy and face. Yeah. And I got family is, sugar, grace, Charlie, and Dylan and Charlie and my family. And I love it. And I love my mom and face and daddy. It's me, okay.
All right. We need to get some pictures. Anyone else here that would like to speak for Down Syndrome? You wanna come up here with us?
Come on.
Come on around, come on around. Yeah, maybe come through there. Come on over here, buddy. Tell everybody who you are and how old you are.
I am 12.
And what's your name?
My name is Silas.
And your last name?
Gazaway.
Gazaway. Silas Gazaway, folks. And tell us what you wanna do when you get older.
I want to be a fireman.
All right. Yeah, we need to be a fireman. Did you bring your team with you tonight?
Yes.
And who are they?
Wally, Hannah, and Cordell and Woody.
All right. Well, we appreciate you guys coming tonight and being here for this special moment. So I wanna get a picture with both of you guys. Come on up here and I wanna give you a copy of one of these proclamations so you can take that home and frame it. I wanna give you one.
Thank you.
Okay? And let's, okay, let's go over here. Up here against the wall, okay, there, well, we got a good backdrop. You guys come over here with me, all right? Come on over here a little closer. A little bit closer. All right, great, guys. I appreciate you so much coming and bringing your attention. All right. Appreciate you. You wanna go back to your family?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, our next one, and I know, I think we've got some people here with us tonight, so if you're here for the next one on intellectual development disabilities, raise your hand. I think there's several of you here, okay, we're gonna get y'all to come up here in just a moment. Sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, proclamation Intellectual Development Disabilities Awareness Month, whereas intellectual development disabilities is a condition affecting an estimated four point six million of American children, adults, and their families, whereas the most effective weapon for alleviation of this serious problem associated with intellectual development disabilities are public knowledge and understanding. Whereas, the potential for citizens with intellectual development disabilities to function more independently and productively must be fostered, and whereas, Lookout Mountain Community Services improves the quality of life for the citizens of Walker, Dade, Chitugah, and Catoosa Counties by providing services to persons with intellectual development disabilities and their families. And whereas, the citizens of Walker County are urged to give their full support efforts enabling people with intellectual development disabilities to live productive lives and achieve their potentials. Therefore, I Shannon Kate Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim March two thousand and nineteen as Intellectual Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Walker County. Signed and sealed the fourteenth day of March, two thousand and nineteen. So, those of y'all that are here for this, if you want to make your way on up here, and if any of y'all would like to speak on this... You're gonna join us again, right?
Yes.
All right, so, yeah, that'd be good, if y'all would speak, tell us who you are and what's your involvement, we'd love to hear from you.
Uh, my name is Vicki Burse. I'm a informant specialist with Lookout Mountain Community Services, Colosseal Program, and I've been doing this for, combined with mental health and ADDI side, almost fifteen years. And I work with Evelyn, and she's been on her job for four years at unique fabricating. I want to let her tell you something about her job.
More likely they put me doing that by Volkswagen when you come to your need. If you ask about anything about Volkswagen, I would tell you how many goes in the box, uh, what kind of small little labels I put on the part, um, how many parts we have for Volkswagen, but we do, um, we got Ford packages came in this year, um, we do all kinds of stuff, but even cars and stuff.
Wow, that's great, thank you so much. Anything you want to add? Tell us a little bit about Lookout Mountain Community Services?
Yeah, I mean, I'm the CEO, I'm Tom Ford for Lookout Mountain Community Services. We serve about two hundred individuals, Evelyn is one of our individuals working, and many of our individuals we try to get and support in the world. And we serve about two hundred of those, and we serve another five thousand individuals with mental health and substance use problems.
Very good, if y'all want to come over here, I've got some copies of this proclamation and bring awareness to this. All right, let's give them another big hand. Okay, we've got another one here, our Social Worker Month. Anyone here for this proclamation tonight? Okay, great, great, so we're gonna let y'all come up, so if y'all want to be making your way up here, we're gonna let y'all speak next. All right, by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, proclamation Social Worker Month, whereas the social worker profession is dedicated to helping meet the basic needs of all people, especially those who are vulnerable, oppressed, or living in poverty, and whereas, elevated social work, this year's social work month theme embodies the need to recognize the extraordinary communication of the professions in our society, and whereas, the social worker profession is expected to grow faster than the average over the next seven years, with more than six hundred and eighty-two thousand people expected to be employed as a social worker by the year twenty twenty-six. And whereas, social worker, social work is deeply woven into our society, with social workers active in government, schools, universities, social service agencies, communities, corporations, and the military, and in the healthcare, excuse me, healthcare and mental healthcare settings, and whereas, for more than a century, social workers profession has been on the cutting edge of helping create changes to make our society a better place to live, including voting rights, improved workplace safety, a minimum wage, and social safety net programs that address poverty and hunger. Therefore, I Shannon Kate Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby designate March as Social Work Month in Walker County, and encourage all residents to recognize the numerous contributions made by social workers in our community. Signed and sealed the fourteenth day of March, two thousand and nineteen. So, tell us who you are, and give us a little bit of background.
Um, my name's Faith McGee, and I'm currently a student at Dalton State College, and I graduate in May. Um, I also work at Highland Rivers Health, which is like the sister company of Lookout Mountain, um, as an intellectual developmental disabilities professional, um, so I'm the case manager for the ADDI side.
Very good, thank you.
And I'm Jamie Davis, I'm also a social worker student at Dalton State, and I'll graduate with faith in May, and so, we're just excited that our community has recognized our profession, because as social workers, we've been trained, and we know that community is something that's so important in our profession and in the lives of the citizens that live here, and so, community partners like Highland Rivers and Lookout Mountain Community Services are so vital, and so, we're just thankful that the community that we love recognizes the profession that we love.
Yes, thank you all so much for being here. But most importantly, thank you for what you do and for choosing this as your career to want to help, help people and help our citizens, so thank you for that, I know that's a huge dedication. So, let's get a picture with y'all as well. Let's give them another hand. Okay, we're gonna take another, just a couple minute breaks and see if we can adjust the air, and also to give anyone an opportunity that needs to leave at this time, that has other commitments, we know a couple of you do, to give you an opportunity to slide out without disrupting our hearing. So, thank you for coming, and I look forward to seeing you back next year when we recognize these again. It is ten minutes till seven on March the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we're gonna go back to our public hearing, new business ordinance O dash zero three nineteen, implements title forty-eight, chapter thirteen, article three, section fifty-one, official code of Georgia placing excise tax on rooms, lodgings, and accommodations. So, who would like to speak on this ordinance first? If you would like to speak, you're gonna come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name's John Affman, and I own a lodge in Kensington that I've been operating for eighteen years, and we had a meeting Monday, and I am very disappointed, because I thought we were having a couple more meetings to gather information, I mean, this is a commission meeting, and I feel like you are not prepared, because you don't know how many vacation rental homes are in Walker County.
But we're not taking action on this one tonight.
I know, but we're not ready. I mean, the people that came were a hundred percent opposed to this, a hundred percent, there's no one there that, you know, because we're all business owners. I went through and looked, and I counted about fifty vacation rental homes in Walker County that I could just pull up last night, okay? That's fifty businesses that are bringing people into Walker County, they're spending money, and, you know, this is gonna be a major impact, and I'm not saying it lightly, but I don't believe, I mean, you talk about being pro-business, we're gonna bring business in, you've got businesses that are operating in Walker County that are bringing people in, that are spending money here, and I know personally that, you know, my lodge has brought, brings in fifteen hundred people a year into Walker County to stay for an average of four days. I counted up last night, in the last three years, I've had people from forty-five states that have come to Walker County specifically to stay here that all spend money here, and this eight percent tax that you're talking about is very well, could just be what puts me out of business, because I have a very thin margin, I can't hire someone to run it like a lot of people do, I don't make enough money, I do it all myself. And I'm not here to talk about that, but I am honestly considering, just forget it, it's not worth it. I mean, I bust my tail, and now, I'm losing twenty percent. If this passes, eight percent, eight percent sales tax, my water bill's gone up, my, everything's gone up, my taxes gone up, you know, I don't, my business has not cost Walker County a penny, not one penny, it's fair, I'm on a dirt road, I don't even have that. Uh, but anyway, you know, I just don't feel like this is a pro-business move, I don't feel like you're listening to the people that are here. I went online last night, and I was looking, and there's about fifty that I saw that are on Lookout Mountain vacation rental homes, a lot of nice ones, that are in Dade County, that are sitting up there, there's all kinds of rising font all the way down, and those people are just gonna make a heyday if you pass eight percent, the people in Walker County, they're gonna have to eat that cost, they can't, I mean, most of them can't pass it on, because it's not something, I mean, I know, I tried to raise my price fifty bucks, and I lost a whole bunch of businesses, I'm having to go down. It's very competitive, and you're, what you're doing basically, because Catoosa doesn't have this, and I didn't even look in Catoosa, but I know there's a whole ton on Lookout Mountain, and those people are gonna reap the benefits of this eight percent, people are gonna go there instead of go here, and that's gonna hurt the businesses that are here. I don't understand the rush, I don't think you really understand the full implications of this, you know, I don't understand what, why we can't table it and have, I mean, we had an opening discussion on Monday, and here we are Thursday, already, you know, presenting it as the first hearing, and we haven't heard from most of the people in the county about it. You know, the hotel, which we talked, I understand that's coming and that's it, but that's two to four years away, there's no rush to do this, and I know, you know, you want to fund the Walker Rocks, but it's like, you know, you're robbing the people that are already doing it to pay for something that says, you know, we're gonna bring more people in and, you know, we're bringing the people in, but this is gonna be a real hindrance. And when you look at the state, I know I mentioned this before, but there's a hundred and fifty-nine counties in Walker, or in the state of Georgia, only forty-five percent even have this tax, that's seventy-one. Of the seventy-one, forty-one of those are at five percent, okay? There's only sixteen in the state of Georgia, that's one, that's ten percent, that have eight percent. You know, you're looking at going to eight percent, you know, if you have to do it, I mean, my first thing is grandfathering the businesses that are there, you know, you're saying you can't do that, have we explored that? Secondly, start it at three percent, say, okay, if we're gonna do it, we can start it at three percent, give the businesses some opportunity to adjust to that, you know, the way this is reading, it's in May first. I mean, my people are already booked for all through the summer, okay, they've already contracted the price. Who's gonna eat all that money? That's me, summer's my big time, okay, that's my man, I get half of my business income during the summer, when families can tell them to have reunions, I'm gonna be the one that eats that, because this is slated to start in May, and these people already got contract, I got contracts through December, I've got, you know, some for next summer. And those prices are set, I can't go back to people and say, hey, you know, I need another eight percent from them, that just doesn't work that way. So, my suggestion, strong suggestion, is that you look into it a little more deeply, that you consider, you know, what are the effects on the businesses that are here? And I mean, I know Walker County's strapped for money, I understand that, I'm a supporter of Walker County, I pay my taxes early just to help, you know, but I'm just saying, you know, it's just not a pro-business move. I beg you, don't do it now, let's look at it, let's get a forum, let's get the people involved, you know, let's find out how many people are here, let's make sure they're on the tax rolls, that they're paying the sales tax, you know, some of them probably aren't, I don't know, but I'm just saying, that would be more revenue, but if you do that, and you hike it to sixteen, I guarantee you, people are looking, you know, do I want to start this business? I mean, this is a booming business across the United States, and if you got sixteen percent sales tax in place, that's gonna be a very negative thing for people saying, you know, do I really want to deal with that? So, that's what I want to say, and I really...
Just a little more information, the meeting he was talking about earlier in the week was a meeting that we put together, where we reached out to all of the short-term rentals that we could identify in the county and asked them to come for some discussion with the staff, so that's what Mr. Affman was speaking of, is we had a meeting, probably went about two hours, I guess, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good input, and some of those ideas and input from that session will be implemented in the revised draft of this document. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak on this ordinance number three?
I'd like to go back to ordinance number one, you gave that to them in almost eight minutes.
No, we can't go, we can't go back, come on.
Wow.
This is scary. I don't want to talk in front of people. My name is Melissa Tenny. Uh, we have a camp in Lefat called Pigeon Mountain Crossing, um, we, we have church groups, mostly church youth groups that come, and this tax will, I mean, it will hurt our business. I understand if we were a fancy hotel, and you came and you booked one room, another eight percent, you might think, oh, what's, if it's a hundred dollars, what's another eight dollars? You know, you might do that, but if you are a youth group with fifty kids that are coming to camp, and they're paying, you know, fifty dollars for the weekend, but you're looking at your bottom line for your youth, they're gonna go to Tennessee where they don't have to pay tax at all. I already have to be cheaper than in that area, because they are nonprofits. So, anyway, this tax will really hurt the little person, it will hurt those of us that are cleaning our own toilets and, you know, doing all that kind of stuff, it will hurt us. I understand that it's in hopes of taxing a big fancy hotel that is coming to town. I also understand that we don't a hundred percent know that that's gonna happen at this point, so to hurt us over not a hundred percent knowing about that, and maybe, maybe I don't know that, but I couldn't find anything that said that that was a hundred percent gonna happen. What else did I wonder about? I know that if that does happen, they get a big tax abatement, what about a tax abatement for me? What about a tax abatement for John? What about a tax abatement for Hidden Hollow for thirty years? That would be super nice. Um, I would love for us to be grandfathered in somehow, I, I think there's a lot of, if you can offer a tax abatement to somebody, I think you could offer a grandfather and the little pugazi in. I also would mostly like to see a no hotel motel tax. I appreciate the Walker Rocks campaign, and who's heading that up? Is that, is that you?
In collaboration with our staff and the chamber staff.
Well, I have talked to Mr. Wardlow, and he seems to be a very kind gentleman, I appreciate that, and, and you're wonderful, and I appreciate that. And I, I would love to see maybe possibly promoting tourism, possibly using like the Mountain Poe Farms, that has an unfair advantage over me, because one, they don't have to pay proper tax, because of county, and two, they don't have to pay insurance, because they're under the county insurance umbrella. And I think possibly if we could take some of those funds to promote tourism, that would be great. Um, I would be willing personally to volunteer under Mr. Wardlow, or under Ms. Wilson, and help promote, maybe we could, maybe we could promote Walker County by using Mountain Poe Farm. Maybe you would, maybe we could promote Walker County by using Mountain Cove Farm money coming in and volunteer staff to work under the wonderful staff you already have. And possibly we could use some of that building because my understanding, the other thing that, that this excise tax, the proceeds from this excise tax goes into the county to promote tourism. But what it will actually do with these little things is it will make it hard for us to operate because it will cost us more money. And we're already promoting tourism because we're on websites that are advertising across the globe, actually. So if we could link up together and instead of paying somebody that really doesn't understand our businesses, if we could link up with them and not lose money and help with that effort, I think that would be great. So, I mean, I know, I believe that you guys are for business and it going well. So I don't think you had any idea of how many people you would be hurting with this. And I hope that's true. I thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak to ordinance number three dash nineteen? Yes?
Hey, Lacey Wilson. I'm with the Walker County Chamber of Commerce, and I have been out to Melissa's place, and it is absolutely beautiful and breathtaking. I think it's one of those places we don't even realize is in our backyard, unfortunately, because we don't have the ability right now to really promote our area. We have about a half a million people who come into Walker County every single year. They go to Rock City, and most people think they're actually in Chattanooga, Tennessee. They have no idea they're in the state of Georgia. They have no idea they're in Walker County. And part of that reason is because we're really not able to promote our county, to elevate the status of our county, of all the great outdoor attractions and amenities that we have. Um, so we are in support of this. We are also the destination marketing organization as defined in section three. Um, I certainly understand the concerns of the small businesses represented here, though. Um, we are in favor of it because it is at absolutely no cost to local residents. It is a tax that is passed on to visitors coming into our area. Many of us pay the same, very similar tax. If you go stay anywhere else in the state of Georgia, next time, check your receipt on that. But this is a tax that is very closely regulated. It can only be used for certain purposes, for the enhancement of tourism. Tourism is a sixty billion dollar industry in the state of Georgia, and if this goes through, we absolutely have every intention of working hand-in-hand with small businesses, large businesses alike, to develop the, the best tourism promotion plan that benefits all of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And folks, I'd like to recognize Alicia Moore, the president, well, the chairman, chairman of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, who's with us here tonight, too. And thank you for coming. Pleasure to be here.
Okay, anyone else like to speak to number three tonight? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on in our new business to ordinance number O dash zero four dash nineteen, which would add chapter fourteen to the county code in ordinance establishing Walker County Business Code. Does anyone here tonight that would like to speak to ordinance number zero four dash nineteen? Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Do you have one for the night? Oh, I just, I want to say, I think this is a very good thing. I think this is something that Walker County historically has been behind on, and I appreciate the current administration looking into this. In my role at the chamber, I talk to businesses all day, every day. And when new businesses call, one of the very first roadblocks they hit when they're trying to set up a storefront is, okay, well, I'm in the unincorporated area in Walker County. You're telling me I don't have to have a business license? When every business book I read says, first thing you need to do, decide you're sole proprietor LLC, very second step, go get a business license. So I think it's more of a hindrance than a help right now that we don't have it. I think that fees are very reasonable, they're very fair. I think just to compare, Catoosa County implemented this back in two thousand nine, yeah, two thousand nine, so over a decade ago. So this is something that I'm in support of as well. I think this will help encourage small business in Walker County and also position us as a, as a place to do business.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak to ordinance number zero four nineteen? And just a little follow-up, as Ms. Wilson was indicating, these, all of these ordinances apply to just the county or the unincorporated portion of the county. In particular, number four there, all of our cities in Walker County, all five of them currently have a business or occupational type license process. And so it creates currently a lot of confusion if someone's looking to set up a business in Walker County, they, there's confusion if they need license because if they're looking at multiple properties, if they go, say, to the Rock Springs area that's in the unincorporated, but they go just a couple of miles up the road, then they don't realize they're in the city limits of Chickamauga. So it just brings confusion when, you know, why two miles down the road, the, the standards are so dramatically different? And a lot of times, people are needing business license to get set up with businesses of other vendors and, and different type things. So this is a common request that we get many times at the commissioner's office. They, they think the person that they're talking to on our end of the phone doesn't know what they're talking about. And many times, they'll tell them, I don't believe you. Every county has a business license. I need to talk to the person that handles that. Please connect me. You don't know what you're talking about. And so there's been a form letter that was created years ago that the staff will say, well, I can email you or fax you this letter to put that to you in writing. And so we're trying to honor the request. The Chamber has had this as part of their scope of work for 2019, and also to, you know, to be pro-business and to promote business in the county by providing them the tools that they need. Just, Mr. Pat, would you like to speak?
I have one question. Where are the proceeds for business license and for the excise tax? Where are those proceeds going? Are they going to the county or are they going to the Chamber of Commerce?
Okay, Matt, would you like to address that?
Well, I, I think that the, the two different sources of revenue, and so we've gotta take them separately. But with regard to the hotel motel excise tax, it's defined under Georgia law where that goes. And so it's divided up into three different types of categories. And I think the overwhelming majority of it, I can't recall specifically the percentage off the top of my head, would go to the tourism product development organization, which in this case is the chamber. With regard to the business and occupation license fees that are paid, my understanding is that those would go into an account under the planning department of planning and zoning and would be accounted for through that office.
Yes?
Can I ask, I'm sorry, I wasn't privy to that. What does the charge for business license?
It's listed in the...
I, I don't have a copy. There weren't any left.
Okay. Yeah, let me read that off for you. This is a very good question since we're here, we don't have copies. Uh, let me find that. Okay, here we go. Uh, this is based off of a number of full-time employees or full-time equivalents, which is pretty standard in our market, the way the other cities and all are tracking this. So from zero to five employees is fifty dollars per year. Uh, six to ten is seventy-five dollars. Eleven to twenty-five is a hundred dollars. Uh, twenty-six to forty-nine is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. Fifty or more employees is a hundred and fifty. And then there's a twenty-five dollar administration fee. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Does this have anything to do with a separate ordinance that has to do with Mr. John Johnson? He wants to create a campsite hotel in a residential area?
Now, that was a, a request that was tabled at our last meeting. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission made their recommendation to the commissioner's office to deny that request. And once we heard further testimony, we actually tabled that for further review. So there's not any action on that tonight at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
My question about the hotel motel tax is, I, what I didn't understand was, to begin with, you guys are asking for the very top end of what you can tax and that. And it looked to me like in my research that possibly five percent went to maybe the chamber, and then the other three percent was to the county for things that were not tourism to do with as they wanted, whereas the lesser amounts were just about tourism. But the eight percent meant three percent went to the county to do with as they pleased. Is that true?
I'll have to go back and look at the statutory verbiage because you are correct. It, it did, the, the ordinance that we are using is based off of a model ordinance that was provided to us by the Department of Community Affairs. And so that's the reason why the, the verbiage in those latter parts is what it is. Uh, it, it is quite a word salad to parse through, but I, I do understand exactly what you're talking about.
And do you have the market that...
I, I believe that you are, yes, ma'am. But I, but I would have to double-check in order to make sure and answer your question accurately.
So three percent of that that we need to have is smaller than the people, to keep the point, pretty...
And we'll, we'll get that clarification. That's a great question. We wanna get that answered completely. So we'll get that information and, and attach it to the update. And also, the next hearing, we'll talk about that as well. So that's a good question.
And my, my other question is, how does this become a law? How does, how do, how do you make this into a law that we, that it actually happens?
Okay, on any ordinance that a county would adopt, it's done by the governing body or the commission of the county. Uh, and at this time in Walker County, us being a sole commission, that would take place in these public meetings that we have twice a month when it's on the agenda, once it's been advertised for two consecutive weeks, and there's two public hearings that are held. And then if, if the desire was of the commissioner at that time to adopt that ordinance, then the ordinance would be adopted or either denied or tabled at that time.
And for this, and for this provision, just to add on to that as, as well, there was some local legislation that was required before that general process that the commissioner just described was able to take place. And so we were able to get a local act back in two thousand and eighteen from our local legislative delegation passed through the General Assembly to even allow that process to happen. All of that was advertised back in two thousand and eighteen as well.
And what that local legislation was invented by somebody to the assembly?
Yes, ma'am, by Senator Morris.
By Senator Morris to the assembly, okay, in two thousand and eighteen. And so just with the stroke of your pen, you can choose to add eight percent tax to all of our business?
Once all the process has gone through, on any type of ordinance, once the proper procedures are fulfilled, then it's, would be my responsibility to sign that ordinance into the, to the record.
And so you don't have to vote on that type of tax for cause of, of this thing being that, that's, uh...
Yes.
So, but you can also choose to not. So that's, that's encouraging. Thank you.
All right. That will end our public hearing for tonight, and we're gonna move into the second phase of our meeting. Uh, it is officially seven fifteen PM on Thursday, March the fourteenth. Uh, you do have before you, we made available copies of our agenda. Uh, we've already completed our, our pledge and our prayer. In the packets, you'll have the minutes from the two public hearings that were held on February the twenty-eighth. Are any of those, have reviewed those? Is there any corrections or things that need to be addressed in those minutes before we sign those into the record?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Two weeks ago, I spoke briefly about six and thirty-four and twelve, which I still just totally disagree with, control the government. Uh, under, it says, another citizen, excuse me, it says, Gary Williams, a citizen of Walker County, explained that not everyone could afford a new vehicle. He has a two thousand and eight Nissan Quest that he uses as parts car. That is incorrect. I said I had a two thousand and eight, but I said if I wanted to buy a junk wreck parts car and use it for parts. I didn't say that I had one I used. I said if, if I had one to use.
Okay, we'll make that correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our clerks noted that, so we'll make that correction, get that updated. So the first meetings, we actually had two on February the twenty-eighth. So the first one was on the Mr. Johnson's request for the conditional use variance. Any corrections on that one?
I have questions, sir.
Yeah, just, we'll get to questions at the end of our meetings. Are there any corrections or anything on this one? Okay, we'll, we'll let you speak at the end as well. All right, I'm gonna sign these into the, to the record. Okay, and then the, yes?
As far as familiar with all the proceeds and meetings, I, I'm not sure what we're supposed to be just be looking at and responding to. I don't know where it is in fact.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll slow down a little bit. Yes, uh, under our regular scheduled meeting, uh, we have, after the opening of the minute, the meeting, we have the minutes. And so if you were able to get a packet of this, the second one that we have, at the top says minutes of the scheduled public hearing, February the twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And when you get down to item number three, it says, open a public hearing. Commissioner Witfield and Legal and Policy Director Matt Wilson provided information on ordinance O dash zero one nineteen. So if you see that under the number three, we're just covering the minutes to put the minutes into the record for that meeting, public hearing, actually, talking about the, the two ordinances. And then also, you'll see on page three, all of these meetings are audio recorded as well, and then there's reference to those public comments that shows the audio file and where that's located. Good, thank you. All right, any other questions? We, uh, we'll make that adjustment and add those into our minutes that, that was brought up to us. We get that corrected and make sure we have the correct information. Okay, the next thing we have is the minutes from the February twenty-eighth regular scheduled meeting, which was where we did take action on items. The first two were just public hearings, very similar to what we had tonight. So is there any corrections or issues with those minutes of the regular scheduled meeting? Hearing none, we'll sign those into the record. Also, too, all of this information is on the website. If you go under meetings and agenda, you can go back and look at any meeting that we've had since the start of twenty seventeen. Okay, takes care of our minutes. And also items one, two, and three, we've already taken care of those proclamations. And again, thank you for allowing us to do that. Item number four is the ordinance that we heard earlier from the second public hearing, which is O dash zero one dash nineteen, which adds chapter twelve to the county code of ordinance regulating building and building construction. As we mentioned earlier, we're going to table chapter thirty-four because there's still work that needs to be done to that. This chapter twelve will allow us to be able to move forward on the blighted structures in our community. Our planning director, planning and zoning director tells us there's about three hundred plus structures in our county that are dilapidated, that's not been lived in, that are falling in, they're collapsing on themselves. Uh, we've had eight other public hearings across the county in the month of February, and by far, the blighted structures at every meeting was the topic of conversation, of citizens requesting that we take actions on these structures because they are not only eyesore, but they are also a safety concern in our community, and they are also devaluing people's property. And so we need this ordinance in place to be able to start the due process that every property owner is entitled to. We can't just go in and start going on private property and taking these structures down. There is a property rights that we have... and taking these structures down. There is a property rights that we have in America where there is a due process, and so this will start the process for the magistrate court, for those people to appear before the judge. And so this is somewhat a lengthy process of all the legal notifications and certified mail and stuff, so this will take some time to get rolling, but this does give the tools to start that. Anything addition? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to approve this ordinance, number, Chapter 12. Okay, item number five is the ordinance 02-19 that we spoke about earlier that makes some just adjustments to the specifications to the constructions of any new roads that would be developed in the county. So if someone is developing most commonly a subdivision road, this would update the specification to mirror other counties in our market area as far as the amount of thickness of the gravel as the base, and also the thickness of the asphalt that would need to be applied to extend the life expectancy of those roads. So once they are turned over to the county, hopefully we can see a 20 or 25-year life expectancy before that burden to have to resurface those roads. We're seeing some roads now in our county that was put in into that eight to 12-year timeframe back under the other specification that are already starting to fail, that have already got structural base issues that many of them are, you know, in that eight-years-old range, which should not be happening if we would have had a better specification. So we will move forward in signing this ordinance into our minutes.
And can I ask, if you want clarification on that, the 50-foot roadway, that's the entire roadway that's on the center of the road?
That's correct, the entire roadway.
And who is responsible to inspect the roads and make sure that the base and all the new regulations are in place?
That is a collaboration with our Planning and Zoning Department and also our Road Superintendent. Okay, item number six is a facility management agreement with Idle Rock LLC. This is a standard form that is used anytime a commercial development that requires a stormwater management plan. This is an agreement of maintenance that is put and is recorded at the courthouse, so any parties or any transactions of property or anything going forward would notify anyone that does a title search on that property that there is a standing maintenance agreement with the county to maintain the stormwater on that facility at the owner's expense. So it does not fall back as the expense of the county or on the taxpayers. It is an expense of the property.
Yeah, I don't know.
Sorry about that. But be at the expense of the property owner. So this is a standard protocol for this development, and we will sign this into the record. This also requires the signature of our attorney and also notarized, and Shirley Robinson will be notarizing that tonight. Health Center up in the Fairview area. They requested this. They needed this documentation to use for their accreditation and other requirements that they have from other contracts that they're engaged with. Basically, this just validates that there is a relationship between the county and primary health care that they utilize our transit system. And so our transit system, we actually transport about 2,000 or so rides each and every month. And so, I'm sorry, this locked. But this was something that they needed, and some memorandum of understanding. They are paying the same published pricing and all that other riders do. This is just to formalize this, to give them the tools that they needed to carry on their operation. Okay, item number eight is a purchase request of new computer software for our magistrate court. Our magistrate Judge Sheila Thompson was with us at our last meeting. If you weren't with us, you can go back and watch her video that she come and spoke publicly about her needs for a software system for magistrate court. The system that they have will be sunsetting with the state across the entire state of Georgia, and so all magistrate courts are scrambling trying to go to the new solution. So this was a contract with a vendor case for case management system for magistrate court. For the cost of the software is $15,000. There's a $250 per month maintenance agreement. This, by executing this agreement, will allow them to get in line for this to be converted over, and the installation to begin in January of 2020. But they've requested that we go ahead and execute this and bring this into the minutes of this software agreement.
Can we make any comments on that?
We will at the end of the meeting. Sorry for y'all having to sit through all these initials, but we have to do this in Okay, over on the second page of your agenda, system accepted, accepted certificate with Motorola Solutions. This is the document of a communication 911 tower that's in Walker County that is also shared with our neighbors in Catoosa County and also Dade County. And this is a project that's been in the works for quite some time. Trying to find the page with the numbers on it. What this is with the discounted price, this is a $257,832 project to upgrade one of our three 911 communication towers. So this is being split by one-third each, so each county being Walker, Dade, and Catoosa each are contributing $85,944 to this project equally to get this project underway. And so we have with us tonight Curtis Cruckmore is our Deputy 911 Director, Deputy EMA Director, so I've asked him to come and give us a little overview of what this is going to do for us.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak. Walker, Dade, and Catoosa County about 10 years ago joined into a partnership for emergency communications. So we're all on one seamless network that we share communication interoperability between all emergency agencies in the area. We actually partner with Chattanooga, and our radio system extends up to Knoxville. So we purchased 10 years ago three towers, and we put a tower in each county, one in Dade, one in Walker, and one in Catoosa County. Catoosa County had a older tower that there was some areas that was not covered on Lookout Mountain South that Canyon Ridge covers at the time. We're in the process at the 10-year mark of upgrading the equipment that was purchased throughout the entire system, and that is covered by grants and warranties with Motorola. The single tower that we have to upgrade is an older tower that we all three share the cost on. If we do not upgrade that tower, then we lose that site, and then we will have a coverage, an area that's not covered in Dade and Walker County that is, you know, vital to the operation of emergency services throughout each county. But again, it is shared through all three counties, the cost gets.
Yeah, thank you. As Curtis mentioned, this is a project of, you know, joint communication that started 10 years ago. My understanding, a lot of that was driven after 9/11, of the communication hurdles that different agencies would have going into other markets on a major event.
Yes, sir.
And so this is to upgrade that tower because as he indicated, with other upgrades that are going on with the system, if this is not done, this one will end up sunsetting, and we'll have a big gap, and we'll lose coverage. This tower is very important to all three counties, and it's amazing, based off the data reports, how much Catoosa County utilizes and bounces communications off of this tower due to the height and the location of this. And so this is something that is very important for us to get this done so we can not have a communication failure.
What would be the cost of the county?
The cost was the $85,000, change, I forget the number, but this is in our, this was budgeted for because, yes, okay, our cost is $85,944. This was an item that was, that's been in the budget, that was planned for, and so they're not doing any changes to our budget or having amended anything. This was in the budget that was adopted back for our February 1st fiscal year that started.
So you mentioned the grants and then warranty with Motorola. Does that offset costs in?
The grant and warranty covers all the existing other towers that were purchased 10 years ago. This tower wasn't in the grant, and so that's why we have to fund this project.
Okay. All right, thank you, Curtis, for speaking on that. Last on our agenda is our February 2019 statistical data that we provide every month, and we also showed the prior month on this report, and we're also showing historical data for all of 2018 and 17, and we have limited data in 16, because some of these items for the previous administration was not tracked at that time, and there's no data to capture in the archives. So our animal shelter, our intake for the month of February, there were 69 dogs and 14 cats. They were successful in getting 19 of those adopted. Forty-two went to rescues to go to good homes, and fortunately, eight of those were returned to the owners, the original owners, and then we only had one euthanized dog that had to be put down. Code enforcement found 327 properties that were in compliance on their street-by-street inspection that we've been doing for the last two-plus years. There were 30 citations that were written on properties that were not meeting the current property maintenance code ordinances that are in place. And in the month of February, there was four cases overall that were closed and rolled into compliance, which is a very difficult task with all the rain and cold and bad weather that we've had. So we're grateful for those four property owners that were able to bring those properties into compliance. Our fire department was very busy again in February, 537 calls for service, which was responded by 736 fire units that went out for those service calls. One thing that we have had a big campaign on and want to bring attention to tonight is the smoke alarms installed. There was 189 smoke alarms installed in the month of February, 42 in January, which brings our total up to 231 for the first two months of 2019. In all of 2018, you'll see on the report, there was 228 that were installed for the entire year. So we are very pleased with the outcome of this grant program. It will continue on. We want to make sure that every residence in Walker County has working smoke alarms. So if you don't have smoke alarms in your residence, you can contact our fire department, and they'll send a couple of guys out that will do a safety inspection and install those in the proper locations at no cost to you, provided by a grant through Red Cross. Roadside trash picked up was 7,960 pounds. We had 17 total nights booked in Mount Co Farm in February. Single-family home constructions, there was, even with the bad weather, there were nine permits pulled to start new construction on single-family homes, and there was seven in the month of January. So very pleased with that number, that even with the bad weather and all the rain, there is new single-family home construction moving forward in Walker County. Media impressions and stories was actually, that was done by the media, whether it be the newspaper or local news outlets. There was 49 media stories that were done for the month. There was 380 of you that we added as Facebook followers to our county Facebook account. Joe was 59 posts for the month, sharing information about what's going on in Walker County, over 30,000 visitors to our website, and we were able to add 224 new subscribers to our free e-newsletter. So if you're not a subscriber to the e-newsletter that goes out once a month, you can go to the county website. There'll be a screen pop that comes up. You simply just enter in your email address, and that will add you to the list. Or you can go and look on the website, and the past issues of that newsletter is online for your review, and you can download those, print them out, review those. So that covers our statistics report. At this time, that will close out our regular scheduled meeting. At this time, we will open up the floor for anyone that would like to come to the podium. We will give you up to five minutes to discuss anything about Walker County in general. Doesn't have to be about anything we've talked about tonight. Any topic about Walker County, you'll have up to five minutes to come and address the public at this time. So who would like to be first? Yes, ma'am, right here. Come on up if you would please and state your name.
Heidi.
Hey.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. We do appreciate it. My name is Erica Williams, and I live at 4618 North Highway 341. And the reason I would like to speak today is because of the proposal of the campsite hotel in a residential area. I'm directly impacted because I have about 550 feet of...
Roadside?
No, sir. I'm adjoined in property. Yes, I'm adjoined. That's how far it goes that we're adjoined.
Okay, adjoined, okay.
Yes, property line. I'm so sorry. And my house is about 40 feet from the line. So, you know, we're in pretty close proximity, and it's not just me. There's, I believe, seven, maybe eight other neighbors, and Mr. Bab is one of them. He's very adjoined. He's got a wide open space in the side of his yard, and it's just right there, I mean, right there at him. But what I would really like to ask y'all to do is just please think about the impacts that it has on us as neighbors, and, you know, we've all been there a long time. I know that Jeannie's family has been there over 100 years, and Mr. Bruning's family, he's been over 123 years. So, I mean, we have a lot of heritage. So, I mean, we have a lot of heritage in that land, you know, for sure, but please consider the impacts that it has on us. With number one, the second-largest real estate company in Chattanooga has told me that it would degrade my property value by twenty percent if I'm lucky, you know, if I would even be able to sell it with, you know, a hotel campsite beside me. So that would really have a lot of impact on everything that we have worked for, our livelihood, all the money that we put in our house, it would just really ruin us. Second, we have so many safety and security concerns, you just wouldn't believe it. I walk my grandpappy in my yard every day, several times a day, and so does my family. And if anyone can rent a yard at any time, I understand Mr. Johnson says he can do a review and see how those people are, but I don't really think that a review can tell you what you need to know about a person, where their heart is. Are they good? Are they bad? Are they loud? Are they quiet? Do they drink? Do they party? Are they good people? I don't think a review's going to get to what we really need to know about those people. And when I'm outside playing in my yard with my grandpappy, you know, they could be just a few feet away from us, and that's really concerning for us. And two, there's always the chance of trespassers because that's just human nature. That's just how we are. And the property, there's really no place to hike over there, it's just a hill, a big open hill, it's beautiful. I mean, the campers could walk up and down that hill all they want to, but really and truly, if they had to go hiking, they're going to end up on Jenny's property or mine because those are the only trusts that are us there, Mr. Whitfield. So we are just terribly, just deeply concerned about all of that, not to mention, here's a really big one, our peace of mind. You know, the quiet times that we have with our families, we all work so hard every day. I've talked to all the neighbors, I've knocked on their doors, I've gotten to know them so well, and we all work so very hard. We work overtime to pay for our homes and take care of our families, and a lot of us work caretakers for our sick family members, so we are just tired at the end of the day like anybody else. We want to go to bed and go to sleep, but we know that the noise ordinance doesn't start until eleven-thirty, so we would basically be at the mercy of campers. You know, whatever their mood was, whatever they were doing, if they were being loud or playing music, we would be at their mercy. But there's one thing I do know about campers because I am a camper. I have been a camper for about fifteen years, I'm a member of the campsite in Sladey Daisy, so I can tell you, I know about them, I've seen them, I've heard them, and it depends on the camper, of course, there are some really good ones that are, but there are some that are not. Okay, I've seen them drink, I've seen them have parties, I've seen them getting fights, there's been one that knocked on my door that thought it was his camper because he was drunk, but, I mean, it does happen. There's going to be some major impacts as far as peace of mind. We may not have any. I won't be able to go sit on my front porch in peace and quiet, I'll be at the mercy of the campers, depending on what kind of mood they're in. But the last thing I'd really like to say is, please consider the message that you send out to everybody in Walker County, because when I bought my home, I didn't foresee any time in the future a hotel being beside it. When I bought my home, it was done for residential, I felt safe and I felt secure and I felt I would never ever have to worry about anything like this ever. So please send out the message to people that live in residential areas in Walker County that you care about them and that you'll take care of them, and they don't ever have to worry about a hotel opening up beside them. But I would ask you to try to help Mr. Johnson too, because I think he has a great idea, he's a really good person, but I just don't think it's the right place. If you allow him to do this, it hurts the neighbors that have already been there, it hurts us.
Thank you, Mrs. Thank you so much for coming and speaking.
I just got a few things to add to that, and I guess, I guess the biggest thing that I've got to add to it is, is I know I can see, this is the first meeting I've ever come through down here, I can see you've all got your plates pretty well booked, but if you would take a little time out and ask yourself, would you like to have tents in your backyard? And that's what we're going to have. Because my yard, I've got pictures here on my phone, I did have them, but I didn't bring them when I got the glossy, it's made, what, you know, where these campers will be sitting, or where I think they'll be sitting. And to show you, I don't know why somebody would want to camp in somebody's backyard. I mean, ask yourself the question, once you get there, what are you going to do? There ain't nothing you can do. It's get in your car and go to Chattanooga, or get in your car and go down to the cove. And most of them probably will be sitting at the sun. So anyway, I appreciate your time, and I think we're going to have another meeting on this honor.
Yes, yeah, I got your letter this week, she laid it on my desk, and so I'll be back in touch when we get a time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, very much. Okay, who would like to come up next? Yes.
What did you just sign then, folks? This fifteen thousand dollars to the magistrate court. I think it has a lot to do with what he just signed, section twelve, which takes away property rights, your property rights, tax-paying citizens. This is under twelve dash six one. Any person who willfully refuses to comply with the provisions of this article, section twelve, will be cited to appear before the magistrate court and upon conviction may be punished according to the provisions of chapter seven, section seven dash eighteen of the county charter. Where's that in this document? Where does it explain that in this document? It's not in there. This document, they just signed, you know, so much control to the county government of your land. I tried to stop. I know there's some people here that defect, some people that I've helped this past week had, he kicked scrap around his house, because that's his income, but he's already been cited. That's part of his income. He separates the aluminum, the copper, and takes it, and he stores it. Yes, he stores a lot of it because he's waiting on it to go up so he can make some money for his family. I would like to ask everyone that agreed, understood this and agreed with it to raise their hand, that disagrees, excuse me, that disagrees with this, please raise your hand. Would you shine the camera around over there on these people disagree with this ordinance, please, sir? Hold them up high, please. Thank you, thank you very much. It's a shame that that was signed into law.
Thank you, Mrs.
This is my name and number. I don't know, if I can give it to you?
Sure, that's all right.
And if you have any questions, concerns about this that they're fixing to sign in, this art, this section thirty-four, please call his office, and I'm allowing them to, for his office to give anybody out there my number that's concerned about section thirty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Please state your name, please.
Brandy Holt. I've been a resident in Walker County for ten years, and he does have a piece of a point, but a small piece. I don't feel like we should be forced to not be able to scrap, because I am a scrapper. I actually junk cars. And the cars that I junk are in my yard and out of my yard within a week. I've never been in trouble with code enforcement. I do not pour, we keep our yard clean and cut. Scrappers, people that do small scrap don't make a lot of money, so if they're not junking a car, they don't have a large income. I think there should be some kind of, they should be given a right to put up a fence to hide their scrap. They should have that right to make that money, because these guys that scrap work really, really hard when they're doing small metals. I have it easy, they don't. I have people in my neighborhood that is not, they're not small scrappers. They steal appliances, there is garbage everywhere, there are doll heads on post, there is additions to a trailer that has never been permitted. It is open plywood in a neighborhood that I've lived in for ten years, and I've never seen this kind of stuff. I have yet to see a change be made. If somebody that is scrapping small stuff is getting punished, why is there no change in my neighborhood for this atrocious, awful house? And I have pictures. I have talked to code enforcement over and over again, and I have no problem with him. These little things that are going on with the county, I think are ridiculous. I think tearing down these houses that are falling in is perfect. I think the junk boats on Hogan Road that have been sitting there, the huge boats that I saw, they need to go. But I don't agree with punishing people with smaller incomes, I don't agree with that. I do agree with punishing drug houses and people that are junking our community up. I do agree with that. I think that it makes a difference that you look at, this person's older, maybe not the best education, not easy for them to make money. Guide them, help them, let them put up a fence to cover up their junk, not make them do away with their money. It's not fair.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to mention real quickly that there's a entity in Walker County that does an amazing job helping people. And I didn't know anything about it until about seven years ago, I went to a thrift store over here in Lafayette, and I was looking for something, and I saw all these people sitting in the lobby, about twenty people, and I was just looking around this little thrift store, and then like, somebody called a number, and these people got up, and somebody walked out of the back room with this big load of food, and took it out to the car, and people got up and went to their car and everything loaded with boxes of food, real staples, and I realized at that time, these people all need food. I mean, you know, I'm going around just oblivious to the fact that there's people here in our county that are going without food, that need food. And so I just wanted to share real quick, just take a minute, I appreciate your patience, but the care mission is located just down the road by the railroad tracks, I'm not sure of the address, but I inquired and I started volunteering there, and last year they gave away one point eight million dollars' worth of food to families in Walker County. Right? They run this on a shoestring. And so I just want to let you know, be aware of it, you know, we're going back to the lodge, we do help support them, but, you know, I just encourage you to find out about it because, you know, I'm actually on board at this point, but, you know, if you are looking for somewhere to make a difference, they are feeding thousands of families in Walker County, and it's just amazing, they run it on a shoestring, they don't waste any money, it's just a great ministry that they do, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Very good, very good. Okay, anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, Dave?
I'll let it go.
Okay, come on.
No, sir.
So come on up.
You're quite the gentleman, thank you. I'm pausing to sit on her lap for a moment apparently, sorry ma'am. I had my hand up before you went to this meeting, into this section. I've been asking for several months now, the dollars and cents for Mountain Cove Farm, and you had told me last ball that I needed to wait till the end of the year, and you would give the dollar amounts as opposed to just how many rooms had been booked, but I didn't see it then, and tonight we just heard how many rooms were booked again, but we would like to know how is it actually benefiting the county as far as dollars and cents? Do you have that information?
I don't have it with me, we'll put it on the website tomorrow.
Okay, all right, I will look for it then. Also on the ordinances, when people were voicing their concerns, it went back to, these aren't new ordinances, but your platform has been, we're not doing things the way they used to be done, we're going to do them better and move forward. So why aren't we addressing some of those that are such tiny little ordinances? And in addition to that, that we're changing ordinances, we're upping the fees, which is atrocious, but we don't have the manpower or whether it's the skill, the knowledge, whatever, to enforce the ones we have now. They're not being enforced now. Some are, and you said we did over nine thousand citations, but there are people that have been reporting, and at the Rosco meeting, someone said for eight years, junk in someone's yard and it's still there. So it's not being enforced. Why are we going to take resources and manpower away from serious things that are affecting our county and address if somebody placed their trombone for an hour in their yard? How are you going to determine what gets enforced and what doesn't? Because it can't all be enforced at the same time. So that's my question on that.
Yeah, that'd be the task for the code officials.
And that would be David Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And based on that remark, well, what are the guidelines in place for him and how he determines it? Is it just what he feels like doing? Or do you have priorities for our county for what is relative and what can wait? Because like Ms. Brandy who just spoke, she's had that problem down the street from her for a very long time, and she has a small child, and there are drugs there, and she's reported over and over and over, and the same with the people with massive junk vehicles, and instead of enforcing the laws that we have, we're going to change it from three to zero. How is it going to be enforced? What is, what is the protocol for what code enforcement addresses?
They work off of complaints, and they're also going and doing a, by zones that they're currently, have been working on since May of twenty seventeen.
So what about the person that spoke at the Rosco meeting that said for eight years they've been calling about those cars piled up and nothing's been done yet? That's my point. We're not fully addressed, we're not fully enforcing the laws that we have, and then we have all these other laws, and we're changing the laws to make them more strict, but we don't seem to have the ability to enforce the laws that we have.
Nancy, yeah? Yes, go ahead.
And I think, I think you make a very true and valid point here, and the primary most important thing, what you're saying that is true, is that we will not be able to full-out enforce everything right out. There is not a chance, because we would have to, we probably have to hire twenty people, and we simply don't have the funding to do it. So, you know, I start off by really accepting the premise of your question, which is, what, how are we going to be able to do it all? And the answer there is clearly, we are not going to be able to go and do everything immediately. It's going to have to build momentum, team. This is, this is an exercise here in going to the most, to the highest priority items that best affect the state of our county moving forward, the vision that I hope, even if you disagree with some of the ways that we may go about it, I think we all share the common goal and vision of enhancing the beauty and enhancing the financial furtherment as we prepare for our next generations. I think everyone would agree with that, right? I mean, we all share that, even if we have different ideas about how to go about it. So I think Ms. Williams' comment that we're not going to be able to get everything at one time is absolutely accurate, and we ask for the support as we go to the highest priority items and help us build momentum to prosperity and cleaning up the county. It's going to be in small increments, it'll have to by necessity. We don't have millions of dollars left in there, so I appreciate.
That's what my question was, when you said, as we go after the highest priority, that was my question to the commissioner, how are they prioritized? And rather, because we do have significant, large problems that are still, we're still not able to enforce. not able to enforce, um, throughout the county in a lot of areas, particularly with, uh, everybody's trash, big piles of trash, why do we keep addressing? I mean, okay, it's the two thousand and four ordinance, but if we're moving forward, why don't you do away with some of those? Or certainly not do five hundred and a thousand dollar fines to add to, because you, there's nothing spelled out to the citizens on what you're gonna enforce. And people in this room that are here, they know they're already, the laws are in place, but they're still waiting for it to be enforced, but in the meantime, you're saying, and now if you do this, this, and this, five hundred dollars, don't even have to have a warning, a thousand dollars, don't have to have a warning. And as a homeowner, our property taxes are up, our water bills are up, sales taxes are up. You're nickel and diming us and hundred dollar billing us to death, and now the new hotel motel tax. And I heard you say on television, we just learned that other places are taking advantage of this income and we're not. We have people in our county, and, and I have heard in talking with people, so many people say, it's this administration's goal to drive the poor out of Walker County. And I, okay, and, and I didn't, I didn't know if that was true, but you're putting people into poverty, and you're not having, no new big businesses are coming here, but more and more and more is being charged to the citizen in every respect. And these fees, and I, I appreciate what Mr. Powell said about the excessive fees, the excessive fines. I don't know how you justify those numbers. How did you come up with those numbers? Five hundred and a thousand dollars for those fines?
Would you like to?
No, I'm asking you, Commissioner.
Well, let me, let me speak to this, because we only got a few minutes. Everybody's been here a long time. Uh, what, what we are attempting to do is, as Robert mentioned, is to clean up our community and start with the high priorities, and we haven't had the tools that our code enforcement's have needed, and that's why we pass this ordinance tonight with chapter twelve, to give them the tools that's needed to start dealing with these blighted properties because we keep hearing from so many what a nuisance and, uh, negative impact these are for communities. We wanna make our community better.
Right.
But even on our other ordinances and that code enforcement's going after, they don't just walk in and, and cite someone a, a fine on the first visit. That's not our goal, is to try to raise revenue by trying to get our, our county.
But it's in there, that there doesn't even have to be a warning now.
I'm talking about on the, uh, just property maintenance enforcement. They're gonna give them, and we've been practicing this now for over two years, that every time an officer goes out, they're gonna write a warning citation and give that property owner thirty days minimum to come into compliance. Uh, oftentimes, they're gonna go back after fifteen days, it's just a courtesy follow-up, uh, just for an encouragement, to make sure that they realize the seriousness of it and also the fact, to see if they are able to make progress. At the time, when they go back after that thirty days, uh, they're gonna be able to make an evaluation. We take weather into account. We take any other extenuating circumstances that those individuals may have. Uh, sometimes you have people that, you know, clearly have had medical issues. There's a lot of things that can happen. So we give the officer there at the scene the discretion to extend that period of time that they feel like there's a willful intent to come into compliance, and if he needs to extend that time, he or she, they can, can do that and, and work with that property owner to get the property into compliance and give them the needed time that they, that they may be requesting to do so.
You're saying that very community-oriented, but the actual verbiage that you put down in writing in the ordinance is, you can do it without warning. Why did you put that in?
But Ms. Williams, let me clarify that, that point again. What you're talking about is section thirty-four dash six fifty-eight, unless I'm incorrect here, and just to reiterate that for you folks, a- again, anything, a- as you refer to your handout, and if you don't have one before you leave, you can have this one, that five hundred and one thousand verbiage, that isn't something that we decided on. That, that's already in the ordinance. And so if we, if we wanted to change that, then we could discuss it.
That was my initial question with all of these ordinances, and you're moving forward, not backwards. It's, well, no, those were already there from two thousand and four. Well, if you're looking at them and you're looking at them in earnest and you're trying to move in a particular direction, get rid of some of those, and by all means, change that verbiage because you are taxing our county into poverty. And now to say, oh, that verbiage already existed, then fix it. That's what you're here for.
Your points are well taken, Ms. Williams, in the time.
Um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak on any topic of Walker County? Last call, anyone? Yes, I'm sorry, David, I forgot about you. Sorry, buddy.
David Roden, um, I live in Rossville. So, at the risk of my own peril, I saw the hands that went up, and so I know I'm, who I'm addressing. So I would've probably been the other hand that went up by itself, so I'll say that upfront. Um, I don't, I'm not here to fuss with anybody. I'm not, I'm, I'm not here on behalf of them. I am a resident here for thirty years of Walker County as well. Have a business in Walker County on the north end. I am also a member of that twenty thirty advance team that I was invited to participate on to look and review the codes that we've been talking about tonight. I'm one of, I think, five others, community members that are part of that to address that. I am concerned with government coming in and telling me what I can and can't do on my property. I do not believe that government has the right to do a lot of things, so I am not here to argue with any of you on that part, but I am on that committee, and I, and I volunteered to be on that committee with, with these other gentlemen and ladies because we have had a problem in our county, um, with blight. If you come through the gateway from Chattanooga through Rossville, I don't know that anybody, any of us could argue that. We have some issues. Since we are so close to Chattanooga, that's probably our best location for investment to make our county prosper and grow, and if that part of the county will grow and expand, that will create some revenue. And if that revenue comes in like we would all hope it would, it may take some of the pressure off of our property taxes and some of the other fees that, that y'all mentioned tonight. Now, I know you're disagreeing with that, but that's my opinion. So, again, I'm not here to argue with anyone, but what I'm, what I'm, I, I want you to understand that the twenty thirty advance team that the commissioner asked us to be a part of, we are not under anybody's thumb. Part of the discussion that y'all have had tonight, we are having right now. As we go through these as well, we will bring recommendations back to the commissioner and his team. Uh, we do not always agree on everything. I may not agree with you, and you may not agree with me, but I, but what we're trying to do is make our county a better county. Now, how we all go about that, we may have different roads to travel. I think what we all have to agree on is what the destination is, and that's where I think the, the discussion is good. Now, I will also, as one member of that, that group, I will leave my phone number with, with these folks up here. They have my information, how to get ahold of me. I'm one member of that group. I would love to talk to you. I would be glad to come to your property, or you come to my business, and I would love to discuss this and hear what your concerns are, because I think that's how we adequately then, are, we're better prepared to bring back that to this, in recommendations. So, again, I, I'm not, not, I'm not disagreeing with any of what you're saying, but we have to make the county better, and we have to do it in a way that invites new business, a new, invites people that wanna buy our homes and not necessarily rent our homes, because we have a lot of out-of-town landlords that their, their renters are ruining your ner- their roads and my roads, and, and I think we can do all better. That's all we're trying to do, is make our county better. So, again, I, I welcome the conversation with you, if you'd like to. I'll stay over, but call me at work, and I'll, and I'll talk to you, and I'm sure the other members will too, but thank you for your time and.
Thank you, Mr. Roden. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Well, hey, it's been a long evening, and I apologize for being a little warm in here and the scare of the door slam, but thank you so much. It's been a lot of good, uh, outcomes, a lot of good discussion, and so, uh, we will adjourn this meeting and have a safe travel home.